Welcome, everyone, tonight to the Hicksville Village Council meeting. We will call the meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the roll call. Dear Father, we thank you for this day and the freedom to meet. We ask for your blessings for our community. We ask for wisdom in our decision-making this evening. Thank you for the freedoms that we have been allowed to enjoy. Thank you for those that serve and protect us and our country. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last time I was missing from a council meeting, Mike Barst said it only lasted 20 minutes, and I wasn't supposed to be here tonight, so this should be a 20-minute meeting, too.
Switch seats.
Hear that wrong?
(Laughter).
(Inaudible) of the 2000s.
Why would they do? Roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
President.
Jones.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Thank you. You have the May 7 regular council meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion for them to be approved.
May I ask you a question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In your report, it says the ordinance committee should look into banning small cell in the right way. What's a small cell?
That...those are little boxes that companies...
Attached to utility poles.
There you go. Attached to a...
Your hand poles?
No, no. Like any utility pole.
Oh, okay.
Power, telephone, etc.
I'm not good at explaining it, but there's an article in your Cities and Villages magazine that you just got on that, a rather lengthy article. And that would explain it better than me.
Okay, thank you. Make motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Thank you. You have the approvals list.
Not a question, but I'd just like to say for the Parker Services, for towing the fire truck, that is a very, very good price. And they told you that they like to help them work out with a fire EMS, EMS, $250 to tow the fire truck. That's cheap.
That's great.
At the bottom of the first page, EMHT contract for 2017, $830. Jim, is that...
That's it.
Legit?
Yeah.
And that's over? It's done? And that's okay?
And that's it. That's their last pay request.
Okay.
What about on Parker Street construction? Is that his final draw?
No. There'll be one more with change orders.
Okay. Anybody have anything? Pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
(Inaudible).
We have minutes in the packet from the May 10 Planning Commission meeting. And that was to discuss an application for a zoning change. Anybody having questions or comments?
I never knew that was a duty slot, really. That's owner all my life.
Yep. Okay, you have the May 12 minutes from Hicksville meeting. They're actually...they're kind of notes because there was not a quorum for the meeting, but...and then we have the Park Board meeting minutes from their May 16 meeting. Valerie's here. Is anybody having questions for her regarding the Park Board meeting? Okay. Do you have...I mean, you'll have a chance to talk later in the meeting, but I guess, do you have anything to comment?
No, I don't really have nothing, but we're going to clean the pool tomorrow. The health inspector, of course, will also come on Tuesday.
You have all your guards coming for cleaning the pool? I always thought that was a fun day, when we did that.
I don't know if they do.
I know.[345.88][345.88](Laughter). I always did have fun doing that. We had fun doing it. All right. If there are no more boards and commissions, we will go on to the council committee reports. You have the Finance Committee in there from May 7. Ron Jones, you have anything to...
No, I reported at the last meeting, Mayor. That was actually just the minutes. A few things added that we discussed.
Okay. And then we go to the Police, Fire, and EMS Committee meeting, May 7.
For the most part, for the May 7 minutes, everything I spoke about at the last meeting, you just know from it. The one item, I guess, right in the middle, talking about the EMS department, looking into having a paramedic, I guess, in-house and be able to do transports. Bruce, or Chief Silkott, checked into a lot of different things. Checked into cost of classes, also checked with our local hospital. And after talking out with Cheryl and with the other committee members, we wanted Bruce, if he was interested in, to take in the paramedic class. And we found out that the hospital does about 200 transports a year, and you're looking at, even with Medicaid, Medicare, or anything, you're looking at a minimum of getting between $800 and $1,000 per transport. We don't assume with one paramedic, we can do all 200 of them, but even if we did half of them, or a third of them, you know, you figure $1,000 per transport times 100, you know, there's $100,000 that will pay for itself in less than a year. And that...the paramedic classes would cost $8,000, or approximately $8,000. And he had training, and his budget yet for training. And we kind of had to act quick on it because when we had got done with our last meeting, and he checked into it within a couple days, he found out that the next class for the cheapest college in Fort Wayne, to be able to take the classes, started on the following Tuesday, and he'd have to be enrolled by Monday. And so we talked to Cheryl, and she was in favor of it, and the budget was there, and we all agreed to it. So Bruce had filled out paperwork, and he started classes last Tuesday, or was it Tuesday or October?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, he started paramedic classes. So that is how many months process until you're completely done?
Of the next July.
Next July. So we're hoping to have our own paramedic in-house and be able to start doing transports from the hospital, too, so...
I think that'd be a good thing, too, because the time-saving from somebody from the fines, driving over to transport, takes a long time.
Oh, yeah. Yep. And I told Bruce, you know, we'd be the first call, so, I mean, makes sense. I mean, local and everything else, so we don't think you'll be able to do all 200. I mean, that'd be $200,000, or $160,000 a year, but we don't see that. But we see the payoff, you know, and being in the EMS department become sustainable. Then we also met, and I apologize, I plan on getting these out over the weekend, I was finishing up this morning, and I had to drive bus, and I had no Wi-Fi where I could send it out until I got back to school today. We met last Friday afternoon. Chief Silkott let us know that he was losing another EMT, part-time EMT. She was...Tiffany Volmer, she was moving out of town, and he talked about the amount of hours that himself, Bob Meyer, John Elwood have put in since February 28, ranging from 400...I'm not sure if I've got the number right, 400, 24 hours, 7, 11 hours, which they're putting in between 40 and 65 hours a week on average. He's kind of afraid of all the hours you're putting in, and being on-call 24/7 on weekends, that they're going to get burnt out. I'd like to not let that happen. And trying to figure out, we used to have a lot of volunteers for everything, and now people want paid for doing work. I'm not saying I blame them, but that's for anything you look at, volunteers are hard to come by anymore. And, you know, being on-call on the weekend, getting a dollar an hour is not really keeping anyone or gaining us any more volunteers. So suggestion was, you know, possibly hiring two to four part-time EMTs. We do have an EMS department, but if we don't have anyone to respond, it kind of looks bad, I think, on the village if we don't have one to answer calls. And I understand, you know, it's not their place to work seven days a week, every week, and it kind of gets old. He was trying to figure a way to entice them, maybe paying them $10 to $11 an hour. He was looking at different ways of scheduling them. Possibly, you know, one during the day for 12-hour shift, another one 12-hour shift at night, and possibly have one of them rotate on-call, or possibly if you could get up to four people, have two on first shift on Saturday, two, not first shift, midnight to 12:00, noon, and then noon to midnight. And so there'll be two part-time in the morning, two in the afternoon, but these part-time people would not be on-call at home. They would actually be in the EMS department, doing work, cleaning trucks, or answering calls, you know, if need be. But it was a thought of hiring some. We asked what the chance would be to be able to find four part-time EMTs for weekends. He said if we give the blessing, he's kind of put the feelers out, and he does know a few people that would be interested, but he has a Facebook account that he'd be able to post it on, and hopefully find four good part-time EMTs to help with staffing issues. So bringing that to council to kind of think about. I'm sorry I got so late, I'm not saying the end of the decision tonight, but just want to let you know we're right on that. The next topic, which we've talked about a few different times, was EMS chief position, about a pay raise on that. Nothing's been done in a long time, and we thought with the position and all the billing and everything that the EMS chief is responsible for, he's...it's a skilled position, and we'd like to have somebody in that position that we keep around. We don't want to have that person bouncing around, you know. From...we've gone through a lot of EMS chiefs over the years. I'd like to have one person in there that was going to stick around. We were looking at possibly a pay raise. We asked Bruce what he thought a fair pay raise would be, kind of compared to, like, Williams County, and he thought somewhere between $19 and $20 an hour would be a very, you know, fair cost, I guess, pay scale for that position. Ron and I both agreed with him, thought that job's been paid, underpaid, for years. Sheila had a different thought. She knows Bruce's doing a good job, but wasn't really sure on the rate, and having a pay raise that soon, he was going to go down the job, ask the EMS chief for three months. We hadn't had a chance to talk to Cheryl about any of this yet either, so...and we asked Bruce that night, too, if he could talk to Cheryl about any of it, including the $10, $11 hour on the weekends. And so it's all kind of new. Ron and I kind of talked, you know, $19, $20 an hour, we're looking at $19, $15 is a suggestion. We voted yes for a pay raise. Sheila voted no, but we were wanting to bring in front of, you know, full council for you guys' opinion. Also, we weren't sure if Bruce was still under probation since he took a new position, even though he's been an EMT for a while. So if we were going to give him a rate, something that would make him off probation, or something we need to be told probation period's over, so... Then the other part of the meeting was talk with Chief Stickney on receiving air conditioning quotes for the police station. First quote kind of came in a little higher than anticipated, around $18,000, and he was weighing on some other estimates. They've also started using the mobile data terminals, the new software, and they're working through the glitches and a few bumps, which is normal with new software, so. They also are going to start handing out some coupons for kids, as they see kids wearing helmets and doing other safe things. They discussed the desire to have a police officer working possibly nine months out of the year as an SRO officer at the school, and then the other three months on the police force, then something that Chief Stickney's still working on, and he would have to get this approved by the Board of Education. The school board would just be paying for the days that the officer would actually have the school, not, you know, their yearly salary. Police Department's working on the junk vehicle list, and that's the majority of...
Got a question, Eric?
Yes.
I think the...I think the idea of having a risk of schools, great. I think the idea of doing runs is great, but when we don't even have enough people to cover shifts, how can we start...how can we start the runs? How are we going to go to Fort Wayne, to Florence, Toledo, whatever, and still keep this village protected?
I think when you start doing the runs, but if, you know, you're looking at July next year, you can kind of plan ahead, budget ahead, for looking against the part-time EMTs on, some of those part-time EMTs, be able to work during the day or for extra coverage. I think the money that you'd be able to bring in would offset the cost of both of it, extra coverage during the day and for transports.
We've got an $8,000 school. You're talking about giving the chief a raise, talking about hiring three or four additional I don't see it.
And we had to have a chance to talk to Cheryl on it, and the one question was asking, where's this money going to come from? I mean, he said it wasn't budgeted, and he was going to have to look into, possibly he was going to have, the department was going to have to come out of the general fund. And he said it had come out of the general fund in the past, some of it.
We have to take care of this town first, you know. People in this...the taxpaying citizens in this town have to be able to rely on services here.
So you're not looking, you're not in favor of hiring part-time people to cover the weekends, so we have someone here to answer the calls for EMS emergencies?
For local EMS emergencies, yes, I am. Whatever it takes to keep this village protected, I'm in favor of. But as far as trying to gear up and hire a bunch of people so that you can make runs, no, not for that. No.
May I interject something, please?
Sure.
Would you go to the podium, please, Bruce? Thank you.
Councilman, I...I see your...I see where you're coming from. The way that this would work would be that it would be me and possibly one of our volunteers when I am not on-call, when I am not performing my duties as a full-time EMT. The hospital understands this. I'm not going to get up in the middle of the day when I'm supposed to be here covering this village and do a transfer. The hospital understands this. I understand this, and I understand where you're coming from. I've already...I've thought about that, you know. But rest assured, my first priority is this village. I've been...
And that's fine, Bruce, and I appreciate what you're saying. But it hadn't been said, and I wanted it said.
And I appreciate your candor, and as I'm just trying to relay or trying to relieve any kind of fears that you would have, that I'm going to be sitting there at 10 o'clock in the morning when I'm supposed to be here at the station covering this village, and I'm off on a run doing a transfer for the hospital. I'm going to guarantee you 100% that's not going to happen. If I am to be here, I will be here. And that's...and I can only say that, you know, I'll say it until I'm blue in the face, but I will not ever let this village down. Because, quite honestly, I wouldn't run the amount of hours I do if I was going to let this village down.
One question, Bruce.
Yes.
Let's put it in, you know, if you were transporting somebody from Hicksville to Fort Wayne or wherever...
Correct.
Who would cover? Why would it be two?
They would...
Taking them, who would cover while you're going?
At this...at this point, we, with us having three full-time EMTs, and then we do have, we still are hanging on to the two volunteers, it would be me and probably one of the volunteers that would be making that run, and then, like, John, or John and Bob could cover here. Well, you know, the way it sits now, myself and Bob usually run from eight, from 6:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon, okay? Sometimes longer than that. Then John comes on at 4:00 in the afternoon, and he will run with a volunteer until midnight. And if he doesn't have a volunteer, then it's either up...it's up to me or Bob to cover that shift. Once again, I will say this, that if we don't have the coverage for that particular day, I am not ever going to leave this village high and dry. I have put way...I've put too many blood, sweat, and tears into this.
But then what about weekends, you know, for...
Weekends are the same way. Weekends are the same way. You know, my...and I will give a full report during my...during my chief's report, but I can only say this, that if I need to be here, I will be here, and the hospital understands that, you know. They also...they understand that, yes, they have 200 runs, they also understand that I'm one person. I...all I'm...what I'm trying to do is trying to bring more money into our EMS.
Bruce, can you bring up how you're, excuse me, recruiting EMTs at this time? I don't think a lot of people know what you're, how you're behind the scenes recruiting.
Right now, the way I'm trying to recruit is I'm just getting out and talking to people. For the first time, and I hate to say this, but for the first time in a while, you know, I've got people actually coming up and talking to me and saying, "Okay, talk to me about being an EMT." What I said to the PFE committee was that the hiring of part-timers was a temporary fix. And I do mean that. It's a temporary fix, and I'll explain why later. I mean, if you want to know now, I'll tell you. I had a meeting today with Darrell Rock. The Sherwood fired an EMS chief. We are going to move forward on trying to consolidate Hicksville and Sherwood into a West End EMS district. This will help alleviate the problems of staffing. We talked probably for an hour, hour and a half today about the certain, about the different things that has to happen before we can...before we can come together. He and I are both on board with it, and I know that the mayor in the past has been on board with it and has really been a driver behind it. And I actually went and talked with the mayor today and told her, you know, that I was...I was going to move forward with this. Because honestly, and I understand skepticism, honestly, that's the way it's going. Just because of the fact that, you know, they may not have the run volume that we do, but they may have a few more EMTs that we don't. So if we can come together and combine forces, it just makes sense from a logistical and from a personnel standpoint.
I'd like to add something. As long as I've been on council, I think, you know, we've always had good quality EMTs fired in the police and array. I've said from years ago, EMTs or EMS departments are going to become a full-time, full-pay staffing situation, you know. We don't have a volunteerism like we did in the past. Not saying people are volunteer, yes, they do, but to have a good quality, quick responsive, with the best personnel. People want paid for the time they put in, and I understand what you're doing with...every chief that's been in that position has kind of come back and said, "Hey, I'm..." And, you know, the pay level isn't there. I've always liked to see that kind of come to a remedy. I appreciate you going with this, asking extra classes and trying to reach out, get other personnel on board. But sitting here the last couple of years, it's always been that same problem, getting other people.
I will...I will say this, and you can ask my wife about this. I'm usually at the station about 6:00 every morning, you know, give or take, you know, I'm usually in between 6:00, 6:15 every morning, because I...there's stuff to be done. I am working sometimes 12, 14, 16 hours a day trying to better this department, okay? It's not an overnight fix. It has...there's been years and years and years of trying to get this department back to where it needed...needs to be. I would love, I...honestly, I would love to be able to come back to you in a year and say, "You know what? I've got 17 EMTs. We don't need this, or we don't need that." But I don't think that that's going to happen. I can't do it overnight. And like I said at the PFE meeting, we're fighting year...we're fighting ghosts of EMS past.
I had a question. With your paramedic training, how many hours does that take you away from the department a week? And how would you...you know, because you are short-staffed right now.
The way it would work is I would probably be working some second shift, but John and Bob have already, I mean, they pick up, you know, we...all three of us pick up, you know.
They have to, yeah. We've got a problem coming up, and I believe Diane, Senator Cheryl, I didn't have time to really get into it, but they're trying to pass a House bill to eliminate the hours that these guys can run.
I did not send it. Did you, Cheryl?
Just sent the OML newsletter.
The O... Right. Online.
So if they tie it down on the hours that you can be here, we've got an even bigger problem. And the volunteerism, that's...that needs to be forgotten.
I...and I...I would agree with you.
Your position is going to be...
I know.
Just to get us rolling again.
I know.
And now we're up to three and looking for more. But I think an EMT should be paid. You've got to go to all-let schooling, you've got to be self-certified, you've got to do the pressure, of course. I don't have a problem with that.
Can...let me...I don't...I have not seen the House bill, but I would almost guarantee that there'd be enough brushback from the various EMS departments, because you do have...you have smaller communities than Hicksville that are relying on two and three people. They don't have the run volume we do, but, you know, they are relying on the two and three people. And if you sit there and if they...if you sit there and say, "Okay, you cannot be on-call for more than 40 hours a week," well, then you've just eliminated that department. And I think that there will be enough brushback that that bill would be...would be stopped, dead in its tracks.
You notice that government, EPA, things of that nature, have a tendency to impose things upon communities, and not a lot can be done about it.
And I totally agree with you.
I need...I mean, you as a department leader need to do the same as me and research out a little bit more and see exactly what they are planning.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I did not know that.
(Inaudible) first responders.
And once again, the first responders are...you can...you can get some first responders. They can't transport, I mean, they...they're...they do basic first aid, and that's...
But you can...you can respond to a EMS call with a first responder and one EMT.
Right, right.
And a driver.
But those of those responders that what they've talked to do not want to be put on the schedule.
Right.
I had a...I had a talk with the fire chief about this prior to the meeting, so I guess...
And I understand what you're saying, but once again, I think until we get to the point where the West End becomes a viable reality, I think putting, you know, this is a big gaping wound, to use EMS terms. This is a big gaping wound that has been festering for a long time. And now, I mean, we're just...we're basically throwing Band-Aids at it until we can get to get...until we can get together with Sherwood. And that I do feel that that's going to happen within the next couple of years.
If nothing happens, we don't have to go to mutual aid, and nobody wants that. You have to call Ant Work, Sherwood, to come in if we don't have the manpower, so we got to try something. I don't want that at all for the...for the town.
But my concern on all that was if Ant Work's having the same problem, Sherwood's having the same problem, they're not going to move their EMS over here if we can't cover and where they're going to run.
That's right. I agree with that.
They won't...they won't leave either.
And...and here's the other...here's the other thing about this. If I am sitting...if I...if I have an opportunity to go sit at another station for $10, $11 an hour, I probably would do it. I mean, not now, but as a...as just a full-time EMT, if I had the opportunity to do that, or I could pick up a little bit more money, I would do that. Now, given that if that same position paid me a dollar... Now, given that if, if that same position paid me a dollar an hour, I'd be a lot more hesitant to think about that.
Do you have any questions, I guess, from groups? I only just got the notes today, so I haven't had a lot of chance to look it over or think about it, so.
I have a question. Do you see the school resource officer being a ninth employee or one that we currently have?
Looking at it as a ninth. And that's just in the, I'm not planning on, oh, I'm going to ask you for this next month. This is something that, looking with, there's just another school shooting. This would have to be something where we'd have to talk to the school board, see if they would be interested in it. If they were interested in it, then come back and talk to committee here, get figures from Cheryl as to exactly what it possibly would be, but we'll find. It was not actually something I was intending to be made public just yet, but it's something that we're thinking about. It would be a ninth person.
Okay. Any other questions on that report? Okay, thank you. Are there any other council committee reports for tonight?
Uh, Water Sewer had a, in fact, I wasn't asking, apologies for that, but I know Water Sewer had a meeting before council tonight, and we'd like to go into executive session after council for possible litigation.
Okay. All ready? Any other committees?
Ordinance met. We talked about the grass and, I don't know.
I'm working on asking questions.
You what?
The, where the sidewalks have been torn up, that stuff you're talking about?
No, this is a height of the grass. We want to change the ordinance on that to six inches from eight inches, and we want, they have to have a mow within three days from the date of the letter.
Where currently, Mike Bailey sends them a 10-day notice, and then he sends them another notice that gives them, that tells him that he'll mow in three days. And they're just reducing that time period to three days notice and.
From the date of the letter, Troy. And then change it from eight to six inches.
What was your question regarding the concrete spoil?
Would you just want, just when we were talking about sidewalks, or are we talking about, because I went through and tried to find a neat place to put it in there, and I guess how would you want to find how long they have from completion of the job, or, I mean, there's a lot of terms in there that are up to interpretation.
Well, we want all spoil from the project.
Are we just talking sidewalks? Are we talking?
Sidewalks, dirt, whatever's left.
No, no, I'm saying, when you say the project, are you just talking about sidewalk projects?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm, yeah.
Yes, and, and.
So I could put it in the sidewalk section of the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
But you're saying driveways.
Approaches.
I'm going to use, write the proper terms down.
I'd put approaches in there too, because some people might replace them both at the same time.
Any, any project like that, which incorporates concrete, stone, I mean, if you dig a, dig a, an area out, pile of dirt up in the easement, and stone your driveway, uh, get rid of the dirt. Just finish the job.
What timeframe, like within the?
Whenever the project is completed, uh, and a completion date I consider is, if I put a sidewalk in for you and you pay me, that job's done, and it needs to be pretty when I walk away with your check.
So SMTA's going around putting in their little boxes, and they're done on that section, but I got piled dirt there. They had the same boat.
Aren't they going to come back and fix some of them?
They worked all weekend on it.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, he's saying the time for the people, so how do you, how do you say one and not the other?
Their project's not done.
That, that's particular area.
That particular project is, their big town light project is, they got all summer to go take the dirt off.
Well, you're, technically, you're comparing two different things, because you got to wait for the soil to settle. When you're doing a sidewalk, it's a complete thing. This is a timeline that they have to wait for.
And trust me, I want mine done worse than anybody's. They really made a wreck out of my front yard. But.
That's a question.
Okay. You done Sheila?
I'm done. That's all we talked about.
You'll get your minutes to Cheryl, right?
I did this morning.
Okay.
They'll be in the next packet.
We're going to need to get you in more, in a more timely fashion.
Any other committee reports from anyone? Okay, we will go on then to the administrators' report.
Administrator's reports in your packet. If you have any questions, you can ask me, see me later, or whatever the case may be.
I see you were a contract award.
Yes, we did.
And, uh, but it's not very many dollars. Were you going to use any of that, call it excess money, because we're not going to do the one concrete street? Or are you going to do any more?
I don't know. It's a good question, though. That's a good, a good problem to have.
Darn, darn, darn.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have.
Yeah. Because I was talking with a couple guys the other day, and they are booked into November already with one paving project. But it would be nice if you would, I can't believe I'm going to tell you, it would be nice if you would spend some of the village's money and get some of these side streets fixed.
Yeah, we looked at X Street, it's pretty bad, and a few others. So that's one we've got on the radar with additional monies that'll be left over.
Yeah.
We've been exercising valves for the last week. They informed me today, they got about two-thirds of them done, so I was delighted to hear that, and they'll continue after we flush hydrants for Wednesday night and Thursday night. So from 11:00 PM till 7:00 AM, hydrants will be flushed, so the public needs to be notified, and I know it's been in the paper and on the bills, so they know that, you know, that's going on. After that, they'll continue to exercise valves, and we'll have them all done this year then. We haven't run into too many problems, other than a lot of them were really full of sludge and, and muck and stone, so the old jetter helped out there. Uh, I need two people for the tree commission, just kind of want to make that announcement. Anybody want to volunteer? Don't everybody rush at once, but we need two people. Uh, I don't know what the qualifications are, but with the mayor on that, and we'll figure out. I think if you're walking and breathing, maybe not even walking.
Speaking of above a mayor, you're in.
Yeah.
Here's one person that told me they would do it.
Awesome.
And he was going to see if he could find a, someone else that might be interested, so.
That's great. Uh, other than that, um, we're keeping busy. There's, just, there, there are no street department right now. It's all one department because of everything going on in the water department, so.
I had one question. Replacing old fixtures, you know, as they fail, new ones, have you ever thought about getting an energy audit of our buildings?
No, that's a good idea.
Because I got, I know companies that, years ago, that's back before LED was even affordable. But they'll come in and do a free energy audit, like go from four bulbs, fixture, and here to two bulbs, and have more light output, and go from 128 watts to 26 watts, and it's pretty much a turnkey project. They'll do it, and your cost savings, that's confirmed by EEP, well, that's all you pay them per year, or you can pay it upfront and save the, save the interest on. They'll do a loan for, you know, 6% or less. And they'll, they'll come in and do a free audit and tell you what they can save, done multiple projects like that, so.
Yep, that's a popular thing nowadays.
Send the information.
As far as the costs go to the, to the electrical, yeah, we'd have to put that in a budget, but yeah, it's, the audit's free, we can get that done this year, and then.
Yeah, the audit's free.
That'd be a good idea. Does anyone have any more questions for Jim, or about anything on his report?
On these trucks, uh, when we have to take this up, won't have to be bid.
Sealed bids.
On what?
We'll go, we'll go over that real quick.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Ron? We'll go over that real quick. We did, the Water and Sewer Committee meeting did decide to sell the old trucks. However, we would like to keep the jet, the old jet, the old 1974, because it's basically a water hauler, and for convenience purposes, when you're out with the new jetpack, you don't want to be every 20 minutes pulling all your hoses out and everything and remobilizing and going and getting water. When you got the old jetter, you can refill right there on the fly, and you don't have to mobilize every time. So the old jetter could be used for a, a water truck, basically, water wagon for us. And then we'd sell the garbage truck and the old jetpack. That's what was decided. So there is one gentleman that's interested in the garbage truck, so I've gotten hold of him. He hasn't replied. We'll see what he wants, but they'll still need to go under sealed bids, whatever we sell.
Put that on a state bid site, kind of thing?
We could do that too. And then, um, council can also elect to, you know, reject or whatever, all bids, if they don't feel it's met some kind of reserve that they had in mind.
Know what they're worth.
Would somebody go pay for them?
I know, I know somebody that's a certified.
Get them scrapped out.
Who are you looking at, too?
You looking at me, Diane?
I know, it's like, didn't know what they were worth. I said, I know somebody that's a certified equipment appraiser.
Garbage truck be worth more.
The garbage truck could be worth a lot more.
Jetpack, yeah. We weren't even offered $10,000 on the trade-in on the old jetpack, because of that leak and everything else. The garbage trucks are dope.
Anything else for Jim? Thank you for your report. We will go on to the solicitor's report.
First, second reading, ordinance 2018-05, second reading by caption only, ordinance amending chapter 951 of the clarified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding refuse collection. And if you'll see, and I'm not sure who Cheryl talked to, there was a couple of minor changes in it from the last time. It had to do with the, one had to do with the village administrator being able to grant people an exception from having to put their garbage out at the curb, and the other one had to do with publishing a notice in the paper as to when collection was going to be. I think that's what the tabs for, Cheryl tapped them. That's just the second reading on that.
What's the tab?
Show you all the changes.
First reading of ordinance 2018-06, and ordinance amending the clarified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, section 181A.03 regarding taxation of a shareholder's distributive share of net profits of an S corporation and declaring an emergency. That's the thing Kim came and talked to us about the other day, cleaned up that loophole from the last, well, two revisions ago, to make sure that we can still tax those things that went to the ballot in 2004 to be able to be taxed.
Did Kim look at this? Cheryl, did you look at it?
She had a email or a copy of it.
Okay, all right. Because I didn't know what section was.
Yeah, and you'll see, I think the, the change, I think, if I remember correctly, I put them in bold, it's in the section anywhere it says intentionally left blank.
Oh.
That was an option.
Okay.
And then there isn't, uh, later on about the fifth page, E, then it's in the definition section, but, um, income, the definition of income, it talks about an S corporation shareholder's share of net profits. And that was all dependent on which year you went to the ballot. That's why we had to track through, and Cheryl found her, and then they verified through the board of elections when we did it, so.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
So second, third readings by caption only, ordinance 2018-06, and ordinance amending the clarified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, section 181A.03 regarding taxation of a shareholder's distributive share of net profits of an S corporation and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
And second reading, a resolution 2018-04, resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the fire chief to dispose of property no longer needed for public use as it is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired, and it has no value pursuant to revised code 721.15. And the first reading, a resolution 2018-05, resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Ford Construction Company for the Cornelia and Arthur Street paving project in the village and declaring an emergency.
We've got a question on that one. Is that the one we get full reimbursement or percentage?
That with the, the county CDBG money?
Okay. So that's one, we got the signatures, and I just want to make sure we got some of that money back, okay? I move or suspend the rules?
Second.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution 2018-05 by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Ford Construction Company for the Cornelia and Arthur Street paving project in the village and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
I would just like to comment that this is the one that we went door-to-door to get a survey done, so that we could get their streets paved, so we want to, this is the one, so.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, so.
Just one backed out, and then it was.
It's happening, folks. Thanks for your cooperation.
Yeah, it's had to.
Yep, roll call, please. Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
And resolution 2018-06, a first reading by caption only, resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio designating Multibank Securities, Inc. as a depository of public monies and declaring an emergency. And I'll let Cheryl explain that.
Does anybody have questions? Why is it an emergency? Because I want to get started.
Because we're losing money.
It's been going on for months, and we're earning 1.3%, and we could be earning 3.5%. Now that's an emergency.
I guess it has been ruled.
Say no more.
Roll call, please. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Second, third reading, a resolution 2018-06 by caption only, resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio designating Multibank Securities, Inc. as a depository of public monies and declaring an emergency.
Same motion?
Second.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
And the other things on my list, still pending is the contract with the insurance income tax, the legislation for the certification committee, I brought that, or have that formed the last time. I think we're looking for a truck, and I don't know what the process is on that.
We're just sitting on it until we find a truck.
Okay. The letter to Underground Utilities, the first one was set, now what we meet about in executive session probably will generate a second one. That's what Mike mentioned about going into executive session. And then Art Cap, after the last meeting, about three days afterwards, Roberta sent me two contracts, which I've reviewed, which are fine, which are the, but she needs to send me the one that combined the two, basically, because remember, we talked about doing the full, the full option that included both. She sent me the separate individual ones, but told me she still had to get the other one worked up, so I'll glance at that when we get it, and hopefully then we'll be in a position where we can bring some type of legislation to approve that and move forward. That's the presentation that she made the last time she was here, that everybody was in favor of, if that matters. Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions for Troy? Thank you. Okay, next we have Kirk Stigney, Chief of Police.
Uh, we have Stephen Stose, Patrolman Stose has completed his six months probationary period. He's been reviewed, presented to the mayor, and if she would make a recommendation, we'd like to take him off probation.
I would make a recommendation that we take Stephen Stose off of probation. And this is, yeah, this is where you.
Oh, we're going to say something?
Roll call, please. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any? Does anybody have any question for the chief?
I'm not, that was, thank you for that part, I'm not done yet. Okay, and also Patrolman, Patrolmen Bostic, Shurk, and Tate have been here for over a year now, so they need to be moved off of the Patrolman Two to the Patrolman One level. There wasn't any review for that, because we already did the reviews on the six months, so it's just a matter of moving them off of their status up to the next level.
I'm just sitting here thinking, this is like, just heard it, so.
I don't, I don't know that it's a, there's no review required after they've been taken off their probation, this is to me just a technical, they've been here a year, so they're supposed to be moved off of it.
This is Tate and Bostic.
Tate, Shurk, and Bostic, yes.
Well, I would move, I would recommend that we take Tate, Patrolman Bostic, and Patrolman Shurk to the next level of Patrolman One.
Take the mayor's recommendation, turn it into a motion.
Second, that.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
And thank you for that. And then other stuff that I have is, we have been receiving quotes on the air conditioning. We've got a total of four people that are quoting it, Starks, Jeff Kaiser out of Eden, Hormans out of Antwerp, and JMS also, they're all gonna be completing quotes for this project. I will report back to you when I know what it's gonna be, hopefully it'll come in, we can get some quotes less than the 18,000 that we had. And that would complete the entire building. We already had in the budget to do the one unit that was just for the back bay, but this, the one that's on the roof is causing problems, it's not working properly, it hasn't been working properly now. And with the roof and the condition it's in, it's causing leaks, and thanks for being up there, we'd like to get a unit that's not on the roof, and then patch the hole up there, and hopefully that'll help the roof last a little bit longer as well. But I will report back on, back to you when we get the actual quotes in hand.
Does the community service center, is it air conditioning?
That's a separate, no, that's, they've got separate units in there, we looked at what they've got. Yeah, there's a firewall separating the building, and they've got three mini units, they call them.
Window air conditioners?
Not window air conditioners, no, they're the thing that goes on the wall, it's a wall mount, it's serviced from, they've got like mini heads, they call them, that are like a.
Take a hotel room.
Yeah.
P-Tech unit.
Yep. But anyway, so they're not included in this.
How many square feet are you air conditioning?
I don't know how many, I'd have to take.
I didn't know, like the front offices and all that.
The front offices, the front offices in the back are separate right now, we've looked at the possibility of combining it into one big unit, also looked at the possibility of doing separate front and back. We have the three rooms in there, the evidence room, the property room, and also the records room, that currently don't have anything in them, and that's a situation that needs to be rectified, because we need to protect the stuff that's in there, with climate control of some type. So, the quotes will include doing that as well.
Does that do your parking area, too, or?
I'm sorry?
Does that do your parking garage at all, any type of heat in there?
There, all we've got, we replaced a ceiling, drop ceiling, gas heater in the back most, furthest away from the office, we replaced that last year. But that's all the heat that's back there right now.
That's what Jimmy put in?
Yes.
So, are you air conditioning the entire garage?
That's how it was, yes. Well, except for the extreme back, that wasn't.
Are you gonna, are you gonna air condition the extreme back, too?
No, no, no. This is just to basically replace things that are already there, except those three rooms that have not had anything, that really should have some type of climate control to protect the contents.
Is there any way to climate control those three rooms and not the whole garage?
I, I'm talking to the people about doing that, yes. I mean, there's, there's.
I was just gonna say, you might have to.
I don't seem to need to air condition the entire garage.
Well, the problem, if you don't air condition, and it's, we don't have it down to 60 in the summer, it's, it's a bare minimum type of a thing, it mainly controls humidity. The floor in there, we've, I've talked to Jim about the possibility of doing a floor coating of like epoxying the floor, because right now, the way it is, it gets wet in there, pull cars in, it's wet. It rains in the summer, in the wintertime you get snow, it melts, it's crumbling that floor in there. And one of the things that we have is, if you put the air conditioning in there, it keeps the humidity controlled, otherwise we have a real problem with moisture in that whole building.
Okay.
But the resinor unit should keep it warm enough, right, for winter to kick the ice off the vehicles?
That's the idea, is just to be able to pull the vehicles inside, be able to defrost.
Technically, that area won't need heated any further than?
No, it's already, that drop, the drop ceiling unit works just fine, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. We had talked about, this is throwing out things that have been discussed that aren't really being planned yet, but about putting like a drain in the back, because it's got a large area that collects water and doesn't drain, there is no drain in the back. We talked to Jim about the possibility, maybe having the street guys come in and put in a drain, that would help with some of the problem back there with moisture. The current drain in the front, maybe with doing the coating of the floor, something would be done to help that drain better, too.
Anything else?
Those are future projects. I've got two other things, briefly.
Okay.
One, we've got, just to let everybody know, it was a public service, we've got the Clickater Ticket, starts today, that program to encourage seatbelt enforcement, that goes today through June the 3rd. So, we will be seeing an increase possibly in traffic stops, and maybe citations if people aren't wearing their seatbelts. And the other thing to spring up to date, we have currently 38 vehicles on the junk vehicle list, that means they either don't have license plates that are current, or they're inoperable, or both. And that's just so far, so we're still, it's a growing list.
I'm glad to hear it's being worked on. They're very evident, all over town.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And what's the, what do you do when you find, you have so much time to?
We will, we first, first we have to go through, and you have to check the van and the plates, and make sure that they are actually not current, because sometimes people get their stickers, but they don't put them on. So, we first have to find them and check and see that that's the case, and then we'll talk to the person and say, look, we're gonna be coming back after we do our paperwork and our research on it, and we'll be giving you a notice. After you get that notice, then you'll have 10 days to correct the situation. If you don't, within 10 days, then we can come back and issue a summons. So far, we've only had, to my knowledge, one person that was issued the actual summons, and they went to court on it, everybody else seems to be able to get it done within that much time. And if, if there's an extenuating circumstance, or just a large number of vehicles or something, we'll be happy to work with someone. The idea is to keep it moving, and the, the main goal is to get it cleaned up, not to issue citations or summonses, so.
We're good?
Okay, any questions on that? Yes?
Do we have an ordinance in this town? Is there a law that says you cannot shoot grass out into the street?
No, I've looked for it, I can't find it.
We need one.
Yes, we do.
It is.
Plugs up the sewer crate, I'm sure.
I've gotten text, text messages with pictures of them, look at this. Can you do something about this?
I know, other places I've worked have had those, and I, when I came here, I looked for it, and I couldn't find it, so.
Ordinance committee, we need to do that. Are you one of the culprits that got it?
No, I don't even know.
She's got, she's got six inches, she's got a litter eight inch, she's got six inches now.
City's got a cut in the city.
No. I have a lot of neighbors that do, though. I've asked a couple of them to turn it around, they do, that time.
That time?
Yeah.
Oh, I have two. Thank you.
I'm not gonna ask you again, you'll tell me when you're done.
I'm done. If you guys are done, I'm done.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay, we will go on to Chief Kramer, Fire Department.
I'd like to start off, this week is National EMS Week, I'd like to thank all of our EMTs we have, and all the EMTs. In your packet was a paper from the EMS grant, or the workers' comp grant that we received. We're getting a new washer to clean our turnout gear, two cancer barrier hoods for each fireman, and a set of gloves for each fireman.
Great.
There is some matching money with that, it's not that much out of our pocket.
1922.
1922. Like to thank Bruce Silkot for working on that and getting that grant taken care of.
That's great. And congratulations on National EMT Week, I did not know that.
That's all I have, if you have questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, EMS Chief Silkot, do you have more?
Just a little.
Actually, actually, actually Chief Kramer, Chief Kramer stole my thunder on the National EMS Week, so I thank him for that. But it is National EMS Week, and I, last night I threw a post out on my personal Facebook page thanking all the present EMTs, but I, I think I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank all the past EMTs. Because people like Cheryl over there, she, she ran as an EMT for five years, and she's gonna kill me tomorrow when I go into her office. But this department would not be where it's at without their dedication and their service to the, to this department. And so, to everybody that has ever been an EMT, thank you very much. And I invite council to come see me over at the, over in the building, you know? You guys are always invited, come over, see what I'm doing, see what we're doing. I've even invited Sheila to do a ride-along with us. She's, she had some concerns, I said, I'd much rather give you a pager, and you can do a ride-along with me. So, she has graciously accepted to do that, and I invite anybody, any of you, to do that.
Would you please tell us when the ice cream machine's full?
I, you know, I, I will do that, but that's somebody else's job.
You might get more people over there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I was thinking that. And lastly, one, I wanna go back to a topic that, you know, with the back billing, I would really, I want to ask the solicitor for a contract that I can enter into with somebody that owes us a back bill, that if they say, look, I can, I can make monthly payments, we enter into that contract. That way it gives us a little bit more bite, if they decide to turn around and they pay two months, and then all of a sudden, I don't see them for two months. I've got some kind of contract that says, no, you need to pay us on a timely manner. So, that's all I have, and does anybody have any questions for me? Alright.
I thank you for remembering our past EMTs, cause they've been extremely important to us over the years, and it's very much appreciated, all those people that served already, and thank you for your service.
Yep, thanks, Bruce.
And Troy, you made a note of that?
I did.
Alright, thank you. And Val, do you have anything from the park? We'll give you another opportunity.
No.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question. Did, is there any plans on fixing the problem, so it doesn't happen like it did last week down there with the EMS trying to get? They put cones. Did they do something? I know, they talked about it. They haven't had a game since. And you were gonna get signs? Or was that just?
Yeah, we've got, we priced signs, we're gonna have a, we're still waiting on an answer on that big sign that had all those different. But we've been talking, that brings up something Ron was talking about with the excess funding we have left over. Talked about making that road extend all the way, and making it asphalt the whole way, and make it a fire lane, or, you know, just no parking, or whatever, on the asphalt. So, it's clear as a bell that, yes, this is a road, and no, you are not allowed to park on it.
We've had parking problems down there for years, I mean, we have signs, they park, throw them anyway, they don't.